Allison here, Mullen.
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcan?
Here.
Beloit?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
All right, good evening all, we'll go right into our operational items. We'll start with operational item B1, which is the action on the approval of the resolution to hold school board meetings via teleconference or other electronic means. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, thank you Chair Mullen, members of the board. So I am going to read this, the background, so that it's recorded and so that it will be available for the public if they wish to listen to it. And then I'll read the resolution and then somebody will make a motion. So on Friday, March 13th, Governor Walz issued Executive Order 20-01, which declared a peacetime state of emergency pursuant to his powers under Minnesota statutes, Chapter 12, Emergency Management. This step allows school boards to meet by conference call or other electronic means under Minnesota statutes 13D .021. The following conditions must be met for the board to meet by conference call. One, the presiding officer, chief legal counsel, or chief administrative officer of the school board determines that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of a health pandemic or an officially declared emergency. Two, all school board members can hear one another and hear all discussion. Three, the public present at the regular meeting location can hear all discussion and all votes unless attendance at a regular meeting location is not feasible due to the health pandemic or emergency declaration. Four, at least one member of the school board, chief legal counsel, or chief administrative officer is physically present at the regular meeting location unless unfeasible due to the health pandemic or emergency declaration. And five, all votes are recorded by roll call, according to Minnesota statutes 13D .021. Note that items three and four have a disclaimer for a health pandemic. So the resolution reads, "Due to the declared health pandemic and the declared state of emergency pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D .021, until further notice, all school board meetings will be held by teleconference or other electronic means." Mr. Mullen?
So you've heard the resolution and the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
So?
Well, there's a lot, so I'm just gonna say that the first person I saw was Mr. Chapman. So I'll say that Mr. Chapman, and then second?
Second.
From Dr. Newmaster. Is there any discussion regarding the resolution? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Allison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster? We need sound from Marge.
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Motion, all being, motion passes. We will now move into our second operational item, action on the approval of the property purchase agreements. Is that Dr. Kazmercheck?
Yeah, I can, I can take that. I think Tim is on if he wants to chime in at all, but. So we have five properties listed on, let me just double check, that's five, right? One, two, three, four, five, five properties listed. You had seen some of the detail in a separate message from me. So I don't, I don't know that we need to go into a closed session to discuss it. I think the, the properties and the approach have been very similar to what we've talked about in closed session before. And you're aware of the appraisal and the agreed upon price and some of the details about each property. So with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Wald or Mr. Mullen if you have any, anything else to ask or say about it. I would just add that there are three homes on Bald Eagle and two homes on Division, so this would bring our total up to eight homes purchased so far.
Okay, I think what we should do is, if you guys don't mind, put a, get a motion on the table and then we can ask, open it up for discussion and ask question. So there, I'd like to get a motion for a, the recommended action is to move the approval of the purchase agreements for the properties described as PID 113022430015, PID number 143022120016, and PID 143022130041, located in the city of White Bear Lake, County of Ramsey, State of Minnesota. The board authorizes a superintendent and assistant superintendent of Finance and Operations to sign all documents necessary to acquire said properties. Is there a motion to do so?
移到
A motion by Ms. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion regarding said action? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Allison? Aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you very much, motion passes, I keep forgetting to turn off the mute, so I apologize. With that being said, we will move into our next operational item, B3, update on the school closure and distance learning plan development. Dr. Kazmercheck, is that you?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mullen, members of the board, and actually we'll just spend a little time, other cabinet members will provide an update on the area that they've been working on, and then we'll have an opportunity to, for you to ask questions about how, how things are going and how, how things are looking for moving to an online or a distance learning delivery model starting Monday. So we don't know that for sure yet. We, we know that the governor needs to make that declaration as to whether or not school will be back in session on Monday. We find it highly unlikely that we'd be back physically in, in session, and in fact, we'd be going to a distance learning model is what, what we think will, in all likelihood, happen. So we are working hard to get ready for that, and so I, I think, maybe just take turns going around and different cabinet members, if you could just talk about some of the work that you've been focusing on and some of the progress we've made, I, I think that might be helpful for the board. So I don't know who would like to go first? I don't know.
I'm happy to go if you'd like.
Okay.
Well, we, I, I just can't even begin to tell you how fortunate we are to have such great people in this district, not only leading at the building level, district level, but teachers that just have brought their most creative ideas forward to create the best conditions for students and families. I'm just gonna go through a couple of different areas that just can give you an idea around the big ideas and then the complexities around what, what we've been talking about. So the first thing is, when you think about distance learning, there was some really good guidance that came out from the Minnesota Department of Education, and it really called us to really approach our work with a, with an equity lens. And the guidance they gave us really aligned well with our strategic plan and our equity decision-making protocol. So that was a really affirming first step in terms of our strategic plan work that we've been doing and the priorities that have been reflected at the building level following the guidance that MBE gave us. And so our, we were all aligned together and just making sure we were thinking about treating, you know, thinking about respect and dignity of everybody involved and making sure to really think about those people that were gonna be the most vulnerable in this situation and design our, our framework around that. So I have been working with the elementary principals, Allison, I'm not sure if she's on the call, so I just wanna make sure to give her a hats off with the great work she's been doing in terms of just being a facilitator with secondary principals, and then how we've been coming together to make sure that we're really thinking about how we're answering key questions, K-12. So we've looked at areas like, what does it look like in terms of what a teacher day looks like, in terms of their availability, and what attendance, so to speak, looks like from a teacher's perspective, and making sure that we are flexible enough in our design that we know that there's unique learning needs and engagement needs that are unique to elementary versus secondary. Tiffany Dietrich has also been really helpful and involved and engaged in having a strong equity focus, but then helping us really process and think through what that teacher experience is gonna look like in this new model. We've, in elementary, I'll just share kind of the big idea, the concept is that each teacher team is creating a learning board relevant to their grade level. And working with technology, we've really been clear to make sure that we don't get tempted by all of these free applications coming at us, but thinking about what that looks like from the family perspective, if they're having to do a lot of wadding in onto different applications. And so we're really looking at this learning board concept that each week lays out the learning with different choices for how they can go about organizing, how they wanna go about completing their learning activities. And in elementary, we're focused on using CSAT and Google. And so that gives a common platform for families to be able to look at. And we've gone through thinking about what student attendance looks like, how we're gonna be checking in and doing wellbeing checks on students as part of an ongoing process, what it means to post work, and how that's gonna look from a student perspective, and how we're gonna also incorporate printed materials. So all in all, we, we really feel like we've got a good framework that was laid out that really gives teachers now the, the ability to run with it and really put their best thinking in that's pertinent to their grade level that they're teaching.
Hi, everyone, it's Allison, I'm here. I've been working with the secondary principals and I echo what Sarah said. I think, I know we have a whole lot to be proud of in terms of the intentional thinking that's been going on around leadership and our teachers and all our support personnel and really taking this challenge that's before us as an opportunity to take advantage of this and really actually make a ton of progress toward our strategic plan. And so Secondary also has talked about lesson structure and how teachers will post daily announcements and work for students, but be available for office hours so that students can check in with them. They're thinking of intentional ways of providing collaborative opportunities for students. And then also, we're being really intentional around the support structures. We've had a lot of amazing conversations around equity and how we make sure that all of our students are feeling success and that we don't have even, that we don't have students falling through the cracks. And so how do we reach out, how do we establish and continue to build relationships in those critical classroom environments during probably one of the most stressful times all of us have ever experienced? And so I'm just really impressed with all the thinking and how we've collaborated as a district, and we have a whole lot to be proud of. And we know that this is the beginning and we've put some intentional structures in place to continue to be flexible around our plan and when students are engaging with it, if we see an area that needs to improve, that we come together and tweak it as we need to, but really thinking of some creative ways to make sure our students continue to make academic progress.
Okay, Dr. Kazmercheck, is there any, any questions from any board members?
Oh, can I check?
I'm sorry, Lisa, you go right on ahead.
That's okay, good evening Chair Mullen and school board members. I'm excited to talk to you a little bit about a partnership with St. Catherine's that we have and our White Bear Lake staff. We're gonna be opening a Bear Care Health and Wellness Center this Wednesday at North Campus. We're really excited about this because we're gonna be able to serve our birth to 21 students and meet their basic care needs, and there is no cost to this clinic. And we're hoping within the next week that we're gonna be able to add a mental health component to it. We're gonna run this clinic on Mondays and Wednesdays from 2:00 to 6:00. And on Mondays and Wednesdays from 2:00 to 3:00, we're gonna be providing telehealth to our childcare, childcares that we're running at the three elementaries to support the work that they're doing there. Like to give a special thank you to Jess Mahi, who's really been critical in helping us get this work up and going.
So this is, I'm gonna add a couple of things to that, Lisa, this was a, this was an idea that we were going to launch this later this spring or over the summer and going into the school year, but given the circumstances, we're moving it up considerably. And so thanks to, again, Lisa and Jess and all of your, your team for being, for us being able to pull this off, so. And also the flexibility of the staff at North Campus, I know Angie Nelson jumped all over it and was excited to make this work, so it's a pretty neat opportunity. I'll share a little bit about meal distribution and just to reiterate what Sarah said about the equity commitment's been part of the conversation all week, over the last week, about how can we best serve all of our students and make sure that no one's left behind, so. The equity commitment's been front and center in every discussion that we've had. Meals are being distributed, that was part of the governor's, governor's announcement that we would provide meals to our needy families, and so there's, there are ways that students can access meals. First, there's a form that we ask them to fill out just to reserve their meals so we know how many to prepare. It doesn't ask them to identify themselves in that meal request form, just to let us know that they want meals. And that helps us figure out how many we should make. And so we're preparing and, and doing curbside pickup for meals, breakfast and lunch at Birch Lake, Onika, and Willow Lane, so kind of geographically centered locations. And families can pick up two breakfasts and two lunches for each child, and we do that on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We also have created 11 neighborhood pickup sites, so we're, our bus drivers are working with our cooks and we're loading up buses and driving them to 11 different locations across the community from 8:45 to 9:45 in the morning, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and families can pick up meals at any of those locations if transportation to those three schools is a challenge. Our social workers have been in contact with the White Bear Lake area food shelf, and they have weekend packs that families can pick up as well. And, and the food shelf was, might be running a little bit low on those, so we're hoping that it goes beyond this weekend, but we are, we have been and we will continue to prepare those weekend packs as long as the food shelf can help with that. There's some concern about McKinney-Vento families who might not be living in our school district and can't access those meals. We've been in touch, Jill Testman and our social workers have been in touch with each of those families to make sure that we've identified where the closest meal pickup location in the school district they're residing in is, and so that can be helpful. She's actually bringing gas cards to families who have to drive to those locations. So our homeless families are being supported as well as our open enrollment families. I think that's it on meal distribution. All right, thanks, Tim. Tim Maurer, are you?
Yep. Yep, I'd love to.
Healthcare.
Yeah, I'll do a couple of brief updates. One is, is part of the governor's executive order, we, the school district have been asked to provide emergency childcare for emergency responders and healthcare workers, now called Tier One employees. We rolled that out last week at three sites, at Onika, Birch, and Willow. We had, we have currently still just under 300 submissions on a form we sent out district-wide. The, we went into last week with a list of about 280 students, I couldn't give you a, I have, we haven't gone through the list now for an accurate number, but those numbers have gone up. On average, last week, we've been serving for around 80 students between the three schools. Today, we saw around 100 students at our three sites. And this is a, our school age care staff have done an excellent job kind of leading the charge and helping plan around all this, and then a tremendous amount of district support across all program areas. Our paraprofessionals, our sped paraprofessionals, our clerical, everybody jumping in to do their part, it's really been an amazing feat to get done in that quick of a turnaround. So we're happy to continue that, and then as we explore and start working towards opening up, last week, the governor also added a Tier Two level of employees that we should look to support if we are able. So we're working towards opening that up to those Tier Two employees as soon as we are able to. And then in regards to distance learning around early childhood, obviously the same concerns, this is, this is new for a lot of people, so it's, it comes with some nerves and uncertainty, but really advising them and, and leading them to take this as an opportunity to, to be creative and use this as a new way to stay in touch with our families and think things, think about things a little bit differently. So they've really kind of done a lot of work these last few days of reaching out to families, thinking about how they're gonna connect with them either electronically or putting together packets to send out in the mail for parents to work with their kids, and how we get to work, look at our work differently when it comes to our early learners and ECFE parents, so it's been good.
All right, thanks, Tim, and then?
Can I?
Oh, go ahead, Marissa.
Sorry, I, I, am I rounding it out, is that right?
Well, we have Steve Asper yet.
Oh, sorry, I was thinking, I heard his voice earlier, I'll let him go and then I'll end it.
Chair Mullen, members of the board, thank you. The technologies department's been working hard on, on three different areas. First of all, with our instructional tools and platforms that teachers are using, and our instructional coaches team has really taken that head-on and taken point with our Assistant Director Sarah Florin on making sure that teachers have the tools and the professional development available at their fingertips to gain a certain comfort level that they may not already have to prepare for distance learning. And then, secondly, we've been using those tools, for example, Google Meet, a lot this last week and this week, and really are putting our infrastructure to the test and, which has been rock solid, and we're really thankful and happy that we've got those pieces in place already. And then, and then finally, we're making sure that teachers and students have the hardware pieces that they need to connect in, in a distance learning format. So working with really all of the departments, we did a calling survey starting on Friday, and some teachers even went into the weekend, really connecting with students at every, every student with a phone call. That was a great personal connection, a touch base to see that, make sure that students are doing well, but it also was a time where we could gather some critical information around technology needs and some other health and wellness needs. And through that, we've, as of last night, we had contacted directly 4,700 students. And from that, we can start to speculate what kind of technological needs our students will have. We know that right now, we can project through that, that we'll need internet services for about 150 students. We expect that will go up some, but we were able to procure last week 250 Wi-Fi hotspots, and they are on their way to us now, so as, we hope to have them in hand in the next day or two and up and running and ready to go out the door by Friday. We also identified elementary students in need of some hardware technology. We know that all of our secondary students are already assigned a one-to-one Chromebook. Some of them had left them home over spring break, so schools are making arrangements for students to get into the building and pick those up along with other learning materials. And for elementary students, we identified those needs also through that calling tree, and we have another system set up so that parents and families could request technology supports at any time, and those will start to go out the door towards the end of this week as well. Again, expecting that the governor will, will let us know that we're gonna move forward with distance learning as of next week.
All right, thanks, Steve, and then Marissa.
Okay, sorry, I will round it out now. In the communications realm, we are helping to share out all of the great things that you just heard about. Our website, we're keeping that updated and we have a page set aside just for the COVID updates and that, and a short link as well, ist624.org and then backslash COVID hyphen 19. And so that, that page provides an archive of all of the communications that we've sent out, and FAQ links to the forms that we have created and shared out, and then some resources as well. So that is a one-stop shop for anything that somebody might be looking for. As I mentioned, we have a frequently asked questions document on that, and, and that information is updated as there are more, more and new details to share. We are doing a daily email out to all of our families and then sending that to staff members as well. And so we are having a daily reach out with our families. At some point, of course, the, the daily reach out will be, or the, the reach out will come from the schools more specifically, but at this point, as a district, we, we are sharing whatever information we might have with our families every day. And then on our district Facebook page, we are continuing to share out both the information related to, you know, the, the newest things that are happening, and then continuing to do the celebrations as well, just trying to bring some normalcy to our families as well. And I will mention that, that all of our messages, when we send them out, they're also sent to our cultural liaison, who then share them out with our Spanish and monk-speaking families as well. And then the Spanish, we do have a set aside Spanish page on the website as well, that is a COVID-specific Spanish page as well.
All right, thank you all, and Chair Mullen, if you wanna follow up now with board members if there are questions, we'd be happy to field those. We'll do the best we can. I, I can just tell you that it's been pretty amazing, the amount of, the amount of work that's happened in the last few days. And we've got, I don't wanna forget anybody here, but custodians, nutrition services, clerical pairs, extended day transportation, teachers, administrators, just the, you know, crazy amount of work that's gone in and the, just the positive attitude and just the amazing results that we're seeing so far, it's been, truly is a pretty, it truly is an amazing place, and it's pretty obvious if you're, as we're seeing results.
Questions, comments?
This is Marge with just a comment. If, did I turn it on?
Yep, you're on, Marge.
Okay, try and make sure. But I'm, I'm just amazed, people have done such a fantastic job taking that quantum leap into something no one expected as we talked casually about going to distance learning on a snow day or something like that. This is like full force, and the equity lens looks like it's in, I'm so glad the hotspots are arriving so we can have everybody be part of it in their own home. So just huzzah, kudos, I'm happy that everyone has done this uncharted, and hopefully it won't last too long, but it'll be a marvelous experience. And teachers contacting, whether it's with 30 in elementary or 160 or whatever in secondary, that's an amazing thing to attempt, so good job, everybody.
Thanks, Marge.
Other questions, comments?
This is Jessica, can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
I wanted to echo what Marge said, I have never been so proud to be a bear, because we're seeing the results in my house with the phone calls, with my student who has an IEP getting confirmation from psychologists. And last week, when my husband was laid off because of the coronavirus, we knew that we could get access to those meals. And we picked them up today, and it was efficient and welcoming and warm, and we are so grateful and proud of all of the work that everyone's doing, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Others?
That's good.
Chair Mullen, Mrs. Scott? And the question that I had is?
And the question that I had is, are there any concerns as everybody comes online? For example, many school districts use Googling at Google Classroom as we all come online and we piss with the infrastructure with how we're going to deal with them.
Steve, do you want to address that? With the infrastructure? Are there concerns about our infrastructure?
And not necessarily ours, but if you're using Google or somebody else, are they going to be able to handle the flow of all, everybody coming online?
Statewide, yeah.
Right. Yeah. Well, just to reiterate, yes, with our infrastructure, I don't think we have anything to worry about. As far as Google's infrastructure, I don't think so either. They've been preparing for this for a while as well and gearing up for it. And just, you know, one example is the amount of bandwidth that's taken up by doing these types of video calls is a lot. And Google expanded the feature set that they give to education and made it their premium feature set for Google Meet for all school districts across the country just last week. And so what that means is, you know, I think we've done literally hundreds, if not more of these in the last week and so has every other school district. And the fact that it's still up and running and maintaining, I think is a good, a good sign so far. I think really our biggest stumbling block might be on individuals who are in their home and do they have the bandwidth for two or three students to be online at the same time? They may or may not, but I'm sure that we're going to run into that and have to troubleshoot from afar a little bit as much as we can, but there'll only be a certain distance that we can go to help them with their home bandwidth unless we move them to a Wi-Fi device.
Thank you.
Steve, this is Kim Chapman, following up on that.
Kim, we can't hear you, Kim.
Oh. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Following up on that question that Scott had, I'm wondering if it would make sense to have a, a large-scale test in the next few days where a number of teachers go on at the same time? And the reason I ask that or say that is at MHealth Fairview, to the, to the degree that some of us that are working from home. We cannot log in from the busiest times from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM because of the concern that it might impact clinical support at the hospitals and clinics and so forth. I think some of the other healthcare systems are dealing with the same issues. So I, I just point that out because we've never had a situation like this either. And with everybody logging in from home, it has really, really strained our system. They're working feverishly, the IT department at MHealth, they're scrambling to get more bandwidth. They've increased it to some extent, but they, they're looking for a second wave of expanding that bandwidth. So it has taxed, and I know in talking, we're not the only, only organization that I've personally dealt with. I was talking with our brokerage firms, two different firms, and they have been Marsh USA, which is a huge one, and Lockton, another one. They both have been experiencing slowdown issues with regard to their systems and networks too. So it is something I think that it probably, you know, to have a wide, if you haven't already done it, a wide, large-scale test would be probably worthwhile before we go, actually go live to the distance learning.
Sure. And in fact, that's a great suggestion. We're tomorrow and Wednesday, tomorrow, both days, elementary will be doing some testing practice with students to kind of see how this goes. And Wednesday was secondary schools. So we will have, not all of our students, but a lot of students and teachers online at the same time in the next two days. And then Thursday is kind of our, okay, let's, let's gather up and let's get some feedback on how that went. So that'll be a good test of our system too. But yeah, good point.
This is Deb. Everybody hear me?
Yep. Yes. Can hear you, Deb.
Okay. So first off, I just wanted to reiterate what some others have said. I think you guys have really moved mountains over this last two weeks. So I really appreciate all the work that everyone's doing. I had just a, a quick question about sports. Have we made any decisions going forward about what we're going to do about the sports programs?
Well, sports are currently on hold and then the state high school league is going to make a determination. They maybe were even meeting today about that. So within a few days, we should know. And I think once we know where the governor lands, I think we'll know where the sports are going to land. I think they are probably waiting to find out what he does before they make a final decision. At least that's what, that's what it was as of a couple hours ago, but I think there was, there was some meeting with the state high school league today. And I don't know, I don't know what came out of that.
Okay. And then my other question was, I'm wondering what's, what's happening with our special ed students? We have some, some different level special ed students. What's, what's happening with those folks?
Sure. I'd love to, this is Lisa. So we have distance service learning plans that we've been creating this past week and what we're doing is we're going to be implementing the IEP as is. And then the case managers are connecting with the families just to see where they're at with whether they want to continue online or through some paper version of the services. And then next week, as we engage our students and families and their IEPs and their service plans, we'll be having individual conversations with families to see how it's going and then just reflect and readjust to see how we can better engage the students in the online work.
Thank you.
It's Angela. Can everyone hear me?
Hi, Angela.
Hi. I just wanted to also reiterate what everybody else is saying. I'm very impressed with all the work that you all have done and I just thank you very much, listening to everything today, even more than what we're getting in the emails. It's just, it's fabulous, everything that you've done and how fastly you've all put it together. So I just thank everybody for all their hard work.
Thank you, Angela.
I think I'm the last one and I just want to, again, reiterate the same thing that everybody else is saying. Thank you all very much for your work. This is amazing stuff and I really appreciate everything you guys are doing for the district, for our students, for our community and everybody else. I also want to thank all my colleagues on the board. I know that this thing is kind of, there's a lot of moving parts and we're working, it's, it's a really good system, but we're working through it to get through it and I just appreciate everybody's efforts, making sure that those things are moving forward and just being patient. And I hope that everybody's families are well and hope that everything's, everything is going well. With that, I will ask for a, unless you have anything else, Dr. Kazimchek?
Yeah, just a, just a couple of things, Don. I want to thank the school board for the support and I, I relay that to, I have relayed that to many, many people throughout the last few days. Everything I've, anytime any of you have reached out, it's been in support and talking about how somebody has done something pretty awesome for, for the school district. So I relay that. I, I take that seriously, so I'll certainly do that again. Let's see, what else did I want to say? Matt Mons is also on. He didn't have a, he didn't have an opportunity to speak, but we're giving him a bit of a birthday gift. It's his birthday today and he doesn't have to be here till the wee hours of the night. So happy birthday, Matt. I don't know if you're still on. He's probably already.
That's very much appreciated, team.
He made an appearance. Okay. So anyway, thank you, thank you, school board members for all of your support and we're going to, we're going to keep, you know, this is an amazing team, amazing cabinet. We're going to keep, keep plugging away and we learn a ton every day and we'll continue to learn, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kazimchek. If there's nothing else, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chair Mullen, I, I motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that and we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Do we need to do a roll call vote for the adjournment?
I think Jody would say yes, we do.
All right. We should do a roll call vote for the adjournment then.
That's good. And then I forgot to say anything about it, so.
Allison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
New master?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
All, seeing all ayes, no nays, we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone. Take care.
Bye.
Stay calm and carry on. Thanks.
Wayne, so I'll come in tomorrow morning. I told Jody I'll just come in in the morning.